Yeah. Yeah, no, there won't be any discussions.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kusik.
President.
Mr. Dees.
Here.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Law.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mr. Rinsky.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 20th?
So moved.
And seconded, so moved by Ms. Vargo Heffner, seconded by Mr. McGee. We have all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's passed. All right. Now we have courtesy of the floor. Do we have anybody signed in? Not seen none. Is there anyone who would like to address counsel? Seeing no one. We have the county executive report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, distinguished members of county council.
Okay.
Northampton County has gone to the dogs. I have a report for you tonight about Danny. Since we received Danny through the anonymous donor, she has been an important part of the facility's security. Danny has six contraband seizures in her short time with us, and three of them were prosecuted in our courts. Danny works closely with our corrections, emergency response team. She blends in and works with the team like she has been there for years, and in my opinion, from the trainings that I have seen. Danny has adapted well to all the noise and confusion of the facility and has no issues being around anyone. Danny is certified and attends bi-monthly or monthly trainings with all of the county place K-9 units through progressive K-9 solutions. Respectfully submitted, Captain Jeffrey C. Mills. Recently, on June 27th, Northampton County's Department of Children and Youth and Families welcomed therapy dogs in the lobby of the Department of Human Services building from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. The dogs were available to all visitors to pet and enjoy. They will be stationed in the corner of the lobby under the TV so as not to be intrusive to visitors who may not be comfortable with the dogs. Studies have shown that interacting with pets can lower stress. The dogs and their handlers are with the Lehigh Valley Therapy Dog Organization and are registered through the Alliance Therapy Dogs and have passed the temperament and basic handling skills training. These dogs are for our kids who come in contact with children and youth, and especially the kids who get so, so very upset, as you might expect, with their court proceedings. So we're going to, we're going to begin a dialogue with the courts to see if, in fact, if not in the courtrooms themselves, we can have the therapy dogs outside so that the children can remain calm and not have it be as traumatic an experience as it normally might be. So, Northampton County has gone to dogs. Without further review, we would like to introduce you to Boomer.
Oh, there's Boomer.
Deputy Tuckzorn is here with Boomer. Boomer, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, allow the deputy to talk to you about what Boomer's trained to do, but Boomer's been on duty for a while now and is doing a great job, deputy. If you'd like to take Boomer around, let him say hello.
This is Boomer.
Hey, Boom.
Uh, Boomer's sixteen months old and has a chocolate laugh, uh, who was donated by an anonymous donor to the county. Uh, he's trained in explosive protection and tracking, non-bite tracking, so that means if his, like, lost or confused person or child is missing, they don't let a regular patrol dog go after him because they don't want to bite at the end of the bite. So, um, he's gonna be used in that way. Explosive detection, nine weeks of training. I've had him for about eleven weeks now, so we're still getting used to each other. He's still a puppy, still a day puppy.
Yeah.
But he'll work all day if I want him to. He can't, I mean, he can't, obviously. The only time he rests is when I'm on this cage and I, I mean, he's, he's nonstop all the time. But he came from Holland, and I talk to him. So, uh, you know, I'm here to be saying some weird stuff, grabbing corn out and talking to him. So, uh, any other questions, Dan?
He's a foreign dog.
Does he laugh?
He doesn't talk to the lab yet.
So when you go, I mean, you would take him in, it's an unannounced, like, you'd plan it with the prison, but then you'd go over, let's say, to the prison with the dog and, and do a sweep?
Explosive protection, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just missed. They, I, I was confusing. Danny. Well, I mean, we're getting, like you said.
Well, he talked about Danny, but we're seeing Boomer, so I can understand why I might be confused.
Somebody had asked me, who, who will bite somebody first?
Yeah, Boomer.
Mr. Kraft or Danny? And I don't know the answer. Anyway. He swept the room. Oh, okay.
What's that? Oh, my gosh.
Or cannabis.
Well, Danny, Danny and Boomer work hard to keep everybody safe in this building and in our corrections facilities with respect to Danny, and we're, we're really pleased. We, we thank the deputy for, because this is a, this is a commitment on his part, too. Boomer goes home with you, you live with Boomer. Yeah, so this is a, it's a big, big, it's a big, big commitment, and we appreciate it greatly, and we're a little bit safer around here because Boomer's with us.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Thank you for bringing the dog in. We're looking forward to meeting Danny, too.
We'll bring Danny in.
Bring Danny in sometime.
We'll do that.
No? Well, we weren't here.
Thank you.
She was? I wasn't here. I was here at every meeting. All right, whatever.
So our safety and security may have gone to the dogs, but our bond rating has not. We have, we have our bond rating, and Northampton County is AA1, which is just one level below AAA, which is the highest level you can be. Moody says we're AA1 because we benefit from a large, growing tax base. We're located outside of Philadelphia, which has a stable rating, and we at Northampton County benefits from healthy financial operations, solid reserve levels, and a manageable debt burden. They said one of our credits, actually, we have a couple of credit strengths, large, growing tax base with modestly above-average resident wealth and income. Our folks are doing well, and healthy reserves and stable financial operation. Our credit challenge, this is our credit challenge, full value per capita is below average. I think I know what that means. I think it means they don't think we tax high enough, and that's okay with me. We're not raising anybody's taxes. So that, that's our, that's our bond rating report. Any questions about that?
Any questions?
We have, for the first time in the history of Northampton County's farmland preservation program, an addendum to operational procedures for acquiring easements. We have an entirely voluntary, because it must be under the law, an entirely voluntary pledge from our farmland preservation folks not to use sludge. So that's within every packet now that we give out to the potential farmers who, who are going to preserve their land, so that, that's really exciting, and we're really happy to be able to have accomplished that. More good news. Teladoc in 2019 has saved us $285,901. In, in the Teladoc program so far, since it's been instituted, we have saved over $400,000 in medical expenses. So the Teladoc program has been remarkably successful, and we'll have an analysis for you in the very, in the very near future about whether we should continue the Teladoc program or not, because there is a cost to it. But we think we're going to continue the program because it's really helping us with our, deferring our costs.
Does it, it pays for itself, then?
Yes, it does. It has paid for itself. So I, I have some other news. This is Greysdale news. And I'm not going to characterize it in any way other than to say that on June 17th, 2019, and June 20th, 2019, the Department of Health was anonymously called to Greysdale to investigate whether Greysdale was short-staffed. They were called on June 17th and June 20th to investigate whether Greysdale was short-staffed. Both complaints were unsubstantiated. Greysdale was not short of staff on either day. Parenthetically, and unofficially, it was suggested that Greysdale's staff should not be talking about being short-staffed in front of residents and their relatives and friends because it isn't true. Now, if there is a staffing problem at Greysdale, it may have something to do with, it may potentially, possibly have something to do with IFMLA callouts. In the month of June, there were a total of 364 callouts, 115 of them being IFMLA, 32% of your workforce. Now again, let me be clear. We want people to take family and medical leave. We do. But these numbers, these persistent numbers that we've been talking about for months and months, suggest the potential, the possibility that there might be misuse when one-third of your workforce is calling out. That was June, May, 329 calloffs, 109 IFMLA, 33% of your workforce. Now, when the Department of Health is called and it's unsubstantiated that we're short, the potential to be short is because of these calloffs. And so I have to, it's my job, to investigate whether these calloffs are potentially abusive of the IFMLA and FMLA system. So what I'm going to do, I'm gonna hire occup, I'm gonna hire occupational medicine doctors to evaluate those, those claims that may potentially be, claims that shouldn't be certified as FMLA or IFMLA. That's what I'm going to do. I have to. I cannot move forward having unsubstantiated claims of short-staffed and the persistent, the persistent talk of this, when it isn't true, when the Department of Health is telling us it's unsubstantiated, and we have a third of our workforce calling out. I gotta do something. That's what I'm gonna do. Any questions about that?
Go ahead.
How, how is that going to work? If they have, they have a letter from their doctor saying that they have this IFMLA?
We have a right under the statute to send them, to send them to a doctor.
So you send them to another doctor, and then who pays for that doctor?
We do.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Uh, Ms. Heffner.
Do those numbers bear out similarly across the rest of the personnel in the county?
They do not. They're well in excess of what everybody else experiences.
So will these docs be specifically for Greysdale?
Yes, just Greysdale. Yep. Although, my understanding is a similar program was run in the prison a number of years ago, and it had a great deal of success.
So it's just deterrent?
The, the situ, I would say the situation.
I don't want to deter anybody. I want everybody who needs it to get it.
No, but if you were just going to try to get.
Just so I'm clear, we're investigating the potential or the possibility that there's abuse going on in the system.
Unfortunately, people can use their own doctors, but we've had this in the past, as the executive points out, and Greysdale and the employees of Greysdale, understand, I've always supported Greysdale, always will, but, like, for example, discussing shortcomings in front of, there's no reason to do it in front of family. There's no, and that's unexcuse, that's inexcusable. And the other thing is, yeah, the FMLA, I mean, there have been problems with that in the past. I'm not a fan of what he has to do, but I understand the need to do it, and hopefully, hopefully, the, the policy will bear some fruit, and it may not be a policy that goes on forever, but he's, he's just gonna, I think he has to. We, we can't operate a 24-by-7 operation, and certainly some of these are gonna be justified, maybe, I don't know, maybe many of them, because it is, look, there's, there's things that can happen, but I don't know how we're gonna keep Greysdale functioning if this many people are out.
It's also, it's also an issue of fairness. Again, we're just investigating the possibility that some of these claims are not certifiable, but the, it's also a question of fairness to the people who do show up and work and the people who do get mandated, and so there, there's that, too. And we're, we're gonna tack, I, I, look, there's nobody more pro-Greysdale than I am. I have the bona fides, right? There's nobody more pro-union than I am. There's nobody who has a better relationship in this government with AFSCME than I do for, as a matter of fact. But the, the fact of the matter is, I have a sworn responsibility, took an oath, and I'm gonna manage the place. Uh, any questions?
Any other questions?
So, last piece of good news. We had a CO graduation today, and I, we had a very special graduate and a very special person in attendance at the graduation, and I'll let her tell you about it. Mrs. Ferr, tell us about it.
Oh, geez.
I have a grandson who has wanted to be in law enforcement ever since I can remember. He just graduated from, to sales with a criminal justice degree, and he was the speaker, and he volunteered to speak at the graduation today, and what a good-looking bunch of kids that were there today. Very professional, and I was, I was most impressed with all of them. How many were, eight of them?
Yep. It was a great class.
Eight, it was a great class, and I asked Josh, I said, "How are you getting along with your, you know, your classmates?" "Oh, Graham, we're hanging together."
They're so, they look so young, too, don't they?
Oh!
You look at that, "How are these people gonna work in a prison?" But they do.
I know, and that one gal is, you know, a couple of them, she was, she looked so young, and so, yeah, all of them.
Congratulations, Mrs. Ferr.
Well, thank you, thank you, yeah, he's.
I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. Congratulations, Peg. Pass that on to your grandson.
Thank you, thank you.
Wish him all the best, and.
He's my, he's always been a little bit of a rebel.
Okay.
Has lived with me on various occasions.
All right. So, old business. First, we have the public hearing on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the County Council of Northampton County Authorizing the Purchase of Approximately 5.64 Acres of Real Property by the County of Northampton in Upper Mount Bethel Township, Pennsylvania", from Janice M. Reimer. This was introduced by Ms. Zarinski and Mr. Warner at the June 20th meeting. Is there any questions or comments from the public on this? Seeing none, I'll open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion? Do you wanna say anything? No discussion, no questions? All right, call for the vote.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Law.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Kusik.
Yes.
And Mr. Dees.
Yes.
Dr. Bowie voted nine to zero.
Sounds like he's in a check.
No.
Oh, okay. All right. Second item is, "Public Hearing on the Ordinance Entitled, 'An Ordinance Establishing the Bylaws of the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Advisory Board'". This was introduced by Ms. Vargo Heffner and Mr. McGee at the June 20th meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? Any discussion, questions? If I wanna say anything? Then let's call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Law. Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kusik.
Yes.
Mr. Dees.
Yes.
And Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Dr. Bowie voted nine to zero.
Matt, I hope it was the team you're cheering for that just scored. Sorry about that.
That's too bad.
Is there, is there any other old business to discuss? Mr. Kusik?
Uh, real quickly, the bill to fund the voting machine purchase is on the governor's desk. I want to thank both of our state senators who supported it, and I would urge him to sign the bill.
That, that was separate from the budget, I take it? It's sitting there all alone.
Separate from the budget, yes.
Still sitting there.
That'd be great.
They didn't work out the formula yet.
I, I believe that there's 90 million as, as part of the bill, and, yeah.
Does that mean we can borrow off of that 90 million, but they reimburse 60?
Yeah. So they'll have up to nine, they'll, they'll be able to bond up to 90 million. I don't think anybody thinks he's gonna use the extent of that authority, and we'll be able to apply for 60%, up to 60% of reimbursement, but let's, let's be clear, it's up to. They don't, they don't have to grant us it.
Do they still have to?
And is that the five-year, sorry, the five-year timeline, or is that?
No, that's a one, that's.
That's immediate.
When they borrow it, they'll get the money out.
So potentially, how much money could come back to Northampton County?
Why did I do the math? 1.6 or 1.8? Something like that? Yeah. I thought I did the math and it was 1.6.
So would, do they, will he still honor?
But my man, I'm here because I don't do math.
But is he still honoring the 50% that he had promised? Or you're saying it's up to 60% that we could get?
The law will be, will have the potential to be reimbursed up to 60% of what we spent.
But did he not say in the beginning that he was going to give everybody 50% of?
Well, that's what he said, but.
But then he, but, so that doesn't apply anymore? I'm just asking.
No, it doesn't.
Right, that's all I'm asking.
I'm not an expert on the statute, but the statute is up to 60%.
Okay, so it could be 30 or 20?
It could be. I, I think the department's gonna have broad discretion, and there'll be criteria, and we don't know, we don't know.
We don't know.
No one knows.
If he signs it, it could be.
But who knows, right? Who knows? I gotcha, I gotcha.
It'll depend on, it'll depend on how much debt burden he wants to take on.
Okay.
So call your governor and.
Oh, yeah.
Say, "Please", okay? All right, any other old business? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. And the first item is the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania to Lease Approximately 7,982.6 Square Feet of Indoor Space Known as Suite 140 at 1800 Sullivan Trail Forks Township, Pennsylvania", from RB Park Plaza LLC, 3864 Courtney Street, Suite 140, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Would someone willing to sponsor this ordinance? Ms. Heffner? Second, Ms. Ferraro? Okay. Uh, this will, we'll have the public debate and possible vote on July 18th meeting. Next, under new business, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Livable Landscapes Grant Program Guidelines". Would someone like, Ms. Zarinski wants to introduce this?
My second.
Second, Mr. Kusik? Okay?
All right, done.
And that will be a public hearing and possible vote at our July 18th meeting. Is there any other new business to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to council committee reports. Anybody have a council committee report?
Yes, yes, I have one. We, we had a economic development committee tonight prior to the council meeting, and the Segal, the folks from the historical Segal Museum were in to give a presentation of what's going on there. Uh, there's a lot, it was very informative, and they have a lot of passion in what they're doing. It's a great place. It's actually their 10-year anniversary, and they're working with Discover Lehigh Valley, and they're working with some other, partnering with a lot of, and they made it clear that they, they want to be a partner. They don't want to take anybody's thunder, they just want to be part of the plan. Some really great stuff. If you ever get a chance to go see the Segal Museum, please go see it, it's right down the street here. And also, we had a presentation on the community development block grants, so actually the federal money grants that, some really good grants, and they spread it around very well, I think. I don't know if anybody has anything to add. And, and they also have a, a home program that, that they're working on in the fall to give out some grant money to fund some home improvement projects throughout the county, so. And the only other thing with the Segal Museum, they also, they want to be known, and this is their, their new rollout as the county historical society, not just Eastern, so, but, anyway, that's.
That it? Okay, the other thing, I just done the CDBG, we just got that tonight at the committee, so take a look at it, you know, if you have any questions, because we'll get it, at some point we'll have the resolution, and we'd have to vote, so that'll come before us at a future meeting. Ms. Zarinski?
So we had the ad hoc committee for industrial hemp, um, not this past Monday, but the prior Monday, and we developed some survey questions. We will be finalizing the survey questions at the next meeting on July 9th, if that's the Monday, at 9:30 a.m. at the Wegmans on 512. But it's been a very interesting discussion, and we have a lot of farmers who are coming out and who are interested, and we're hoping that this survey will not only generate interest, but will also create some additional permitting in Northampton County in the future, for next year.
Okay, great. Any other committee reports?
A quick question. How many farmers are growing hemp this year?
Five.
Five this year?
Five.
In our county?
There are five permits in the county this year.
And it's truly experimental, if you listen to them. I mean, it's, they're taking a risk.
But, you know.
Risk reward.
Exactly.
Does hemp grow like bamboo? Like, does it grow like crazy?
It grows like weed.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Remember?
No, bamboo, if somebody gives you bamboo, burn it. I mean, it's tough as nuts.
No, it's better than bamboo.
Well, I'm not saying it's worse, I'm just wondering.
No, I know, bamboo has a tendency to spread, like, with little shoots everywhere. I got it. Yeah, it's still different.
But, but, so it's, I mean, it is, I understood it's hardy, hemp is a hardy plant.
It's very durable. It's a fiber, you know?
There's a lot of technical involved in it. I mean, cross-pollination between the different types. I mean, there's a lot to it. I'm, it's quite.
Oh, yeah, it's really interesting.
Yeah, no, I'm looking forward to what we hear, that and your seeds and whatever.
Yeah.
Oh, no. All right. Any other council committee reports?
Oh, no committee report.
Any, all right, council liaison reports. Ms. Zarinski?
So I attended the farmland preservation meeting last night. We have currently preserved 16,427.57 acres on 196 farms. We have also vacated the list for 2019, so that means we're actually looking for more farms, potentially for next year, and they're trying to figure out how they're going to seek that out. Also, the farm bill, the PA Farm Bill was passed, an amendment such that it allows for more farms to be preserved if they have a family member or secondary residence on the property where that person doesn't necessarily work on the farm. And that's in some legalese in the farm bill. Yeah, in an amendment. Yeah, so that opens up the, that opens up preservation for a few more farms. So that was very good. We had a very lively discussion.
Okay. Any other, uh, Mr. Butt?
Yes, on the prison advisory board, we meet monthly. We go, we go over inmates' issues and issues in the prison, so that's done on a monthly basis. I also attended a seminar at Northampton County for the Color of Justice, I believe, and it was really pleasantly surprised, or not surprised, but listening to it, it talked about Lehigh County, Bucks County, their correctional, their, their probation officers and how they handle their juveniles. Just listening to these people in their conversations, I realized Northampton County's ahead of the curve on a lot of these things. We have workforce investment board in our, our prison. We, we can get a high school equivalent degree in our prisons. We work very well. We work very well, our juvenile, um, our, our probation officers are kind of doing a lot of new things, uh, that, that other ones aren't, and, and, you know, hearing these people that live, eat, and, 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 you know, this is their, their thing, they, they used Northampton as an example, you know, at this, uh, this seminar, so, that, that was great, and I, I also met with, uh, our director of our Courts and Corrections, Mr. Green. We will have a committee meeting, I believe, in September prior to the budgeting, I'd like to have a meeting with him. We talked about some of the friction in the past, they want to be more, hopefully, we can get more forthcoming with their vendors, they told me they would, the director told me he would show us the vendors and, and the different prices. We talked a little bit about the overtime on the juvenile department, he said, "Look at the, uh, income, too, because part of that overtime", he claims was because we got, um, or he explained, "Because we got, we got youth from other counties, um, that helped put that up, staffing was also an issue, and when we cannot service the youth in, in our county, um, and we can do most of it, but there's some special cases that we can't do it, we have to send to other counties, it's about $400 a day." Now, what he does is what a lot of these directors do, is they take the three years, and then they average it out, and that's how they come up with the, uh, overtime, uh, budget. Uh, he said, "This one, you know, this is the worst it's been, uh, he doesn't, you know, he's gonna up, up it next year when he comes back, and, uh, um, so, he, he does want to, he assured, if there's any questions, he, he told me to tell the council people, if there's any questions, run them through me, they want to be very open with this council, they want to work with the council." So, that's how that meeting went, um, if anybody needs anything from, as the liaison from Courts and Corrections, please see me, I will get you that, those answers, and if I can't get you, we'll set up a meeting, and we'll either bring them in at that point or get them free. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a, a quick request? Uh, the, I noticed the prison healthcare contract is, is up, um, if the folks from Prime Care could be at the, the meeting, I, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other?
Yeah. Well, we need them to come back for counsel. I'd like to tell them to be, I'm not...
Uh, if all goes well at the finance committee.
It is. I agree.
Any other liaison? Oh, I thought you did. Seeing, oh, Bill.
Yeah, the Planning Commission, last Thursday, we meet monthly, and, just a, real quick, public engagement and participation, there's a pizza and planning, um, on the, um, freight July 31st over at their office on Moncrone Boulevard, um, local technical assistance program, and a freight advisory meeting, which is open to the public on August 7th.